We're gonna go ahead and get cranked up.
I love that, love that hammer.
Yeah, it's nice. All right, we'll get back in gear here. Item H on the agenda, Community Development Block Grant for Mulberry School Sewer Extension. Two items, grant contract, the approval, and Wilkes County Grant Project Ordinance approval. Kelly Coffey's here, he's Senior Planner, High Country Council of Governments. Come on up, Kelly, and Chris Huffman, our official finance director. And we had a lovely party for Jerry last week, and I thought he was gonna cry when I gave him that watch, 'cause it wasn't Rolex. Guys, let's, the floor's yours.
Well, I probably don't have to tell you that the county's been awarded a Community Development Block Grant to extend sewer from North Wilkesboro to Mulberry Elementary School. And so, the county has received a grant contract from the Department of Environmental Quality. And so, I'm here to describe what's in that contract and tell you a little bit about what to expect in the next few months. In the contract, the county agrees to follow all the CDBG program requirements, and this is part of our grant administration. We'll be handling all that. It outlines the routine reporting requirements and procedures for requested payments. Again, this is something that the Council of Governments will handle. It has a schedule of grant activities, such as when various documents have to be submitted, like the environmental review, the engineering report. And it has the typical legal provisions that you find in most contracts regarding things like termination, modification, indemnity, and so forth. So, in summary, it contains what you would expect in this type of contract. There's no burdensome obligations that can't be handled through routine grant administration. And so, there's, you're not committing to anything that you would regret later.
That's good.
I need to add that to meet the requirements, to meet the CDBG program requirements that are in the contract, I'll be coming back in the next two or three months and presenting various plans and policies that the county must adopt to comply with the CDBG regulations. And some examples of those would be the Language Access Plan, Citizen Participation Plan, Procurement Plan, there's several others. These are not exceptional or difficult to implement. Local governments everywhere routinely adopt these all the time. But whenever I come back, I'll, I'll go over them one by one and explain them in detail.
That'll be interesting.
Well, and actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, when you adopt these policies, they can also be used for the neighborhood revitalization?
No, because...
Okay.
Well, normally they would be, but that's the EQ, this is...
Okay.
Of course.
All right, different departments.
Well, that's fine.
But they're the same thing.
They're exactly the same thing.
Well, that's, that's, you know, when you get that federal money, it gets complicated. I don't know, there's gotta be some federal connection to this, isn't there?
Yeah, it is, definitely.
The old excessive force provision. Well, and that's fine, this is a great project, we really need it. We, I know there was some discussion about the need to, or desire to expand it, but being practical to get this done, get the school out from under the burden they have, it's great. I can't say enough about the relationship that we have with High Country, and I've served on that board for many years now, probably 12, 13 years, and it's just been so valuable to the, to the county, to, with help of the grants and all the other. This GIS program that we're doing with the, with the fire departments has just been invaluable. So, where do we sign?
Got a question. Chairman?
You want... Wait a minute, are we, are we, are we ready to approve it? Do you want to get a motion on the floor in a second, or you want to discuss it?
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
A million dollars is the max of the grant, is that correct?
Right.
And county match is 20,000, correct?
It's not exactly a match, it's that there, there's a charge for grant administration, we have to have something for grant administration. They don't require a match to get the grant, but that, that's just an expense like the engineering expenses.
That's all the cost to count, 20,000?
Will be the 20,000 plus the engineering costs.
And how, how much of that do we want? Eighty-seven-five?
The CDBG grant does not pay for the admin cost or the engineering costs.
Is that described, that's described in the ordinance, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. But you got to estimate it, sixty-seven.
Yeah.
In this project, in the grant?
If in fact, if in fact it goes over the million dollars, over this is what happens, or who's responsible for that?
We'll just have to wait and see how the bids come in. I mean, we can't, that's the max, we can't get any more grants.
You can't get any more than one million.
Right.
We would bring the bids to you so we can make that. We wouldn't, we wouldn't award, you would have, you will have to award, the board will have to award the bid, so you will have to know, you know, if the project comes in over.
But we really can't know until we get it?
Well, let me, let me add this, they informed us, they had a certain, so many million dollars set aside for this program, and they had some money left over, it was a few hundred thousand dollars left over. And so, they said if the bids do come in over, to contact them, and we could possibly, not quite what I told you just a second ago, but I mean, we can't get, we can't apply for another grant, but they might give us a supplement to cover it if, if the bids come in over.
That'd be nice. Have you got, that's a good question, that's a good question, Commissioner Elmore. So, what, could it be under, so the bid could come in under a million?
Well, it's possible.
Yeah, okay. Do we have any estimates at all of what the project might cost? Any idea at all, not till the engineering's done?
Yeah, well, the engineering, they did do a preliminary engineering report and gave us the, the way the engineers do it, I mean, there's certain costs that they can massage, like rock excavation and things like that. And so, you know, we, we said we had a million dollars to work with, can you give us an estimate based on that? And so, he gave us an estimate and said, well, we didn't include a rock excavation, we didn't include any contingency, so a million dollars is pretty tight.
It sounds like it. Yeah, with no contingency, especially right now, yeah, go ahead.
It didn't come out around 1.2, was what the potential cost could have been?
It could have been if you included the contingencies and the rock excavation and things like that.
Could, could we find out if we get the extra money before we approve the bid?
I would think so.
We're approving, applying right now, correct?
No, we're accepting, correct?
Accepting the grant.
Okay.
Which means we, we're committed to paying for the engineering, because we can't get a bid until we have the engineering, clearly. Come out, can't get the money. Our other option, though, is there's no grant, and then we put in a new system up there, which probably costs us more than the one I'm...
Make a motion we approve.
What do you think? Yeah. And we're kinda stuck now.
How hard would it be to second that one?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Kelly. And then, there's a budget?
Yes.
A grant ordinance that goes with it?
Just going off of Commissioners Elmore's questions, the, the project ordinance is basically a budget within our county budget that just addresses this capital, capital project. As Kelly stated earlier, the million dollars from the CDBG grant just covers the public sewer improvements. What the county would have to pay for would be the engineering and the admin costs, so basically, the county would be responsible as now for eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, but the million dollars would come from the CDBG grant. This is, the reason we want to do this grant project ordinance is because this is gonna be a multi-year project that's gonna overlap, and once we do this project ordinance, it's set in stone, but we could come back and amend it, we won't have to mess with our county budget as, as we would pay this out of, this, this grant ordinance.
We budgeted the eighty-seven-five this year's budget, right? Did we put it in there?
In...
Okay.
So, we gotta come out front now?
The possible completion date...
The contract expiration date is July 2021, but that's the maximum.
Yes, it will come out of fund balance, but it would, it may, may not come out this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Is there any way, I mean, can you use this grant, I'm just throwing this out there for North Wilkesboro maybe partner, and maybe put a different line in where people could tap on? Is that an option if they were willing to?
I think we've already explored that at one point.
Yeah, and there are some, aren't there? Isn't there some discussion about a few at the end?
There's about 2,000 linear feet of gravity line where there could be some hooked on, but the rest of it's forced main, and...
You've got that ham house up there, you love it.
There's 2,000.
Yeah, they love it.
Linear feet of gravity line.
How far is it up above the, the mountain view?
Mountain view? I don't think it's a mile.
It's over 2,000 feet.
Yeah. I really don't know, but I know they would love to get on, but I mean, it's just, we talked about it in another meeting, it's just, it's hard to run it up there, nobody can, you know, have the option to pay to tap in to it if they want to.
We've got the same situation up in Rose Creek.
Yeah.
So, we, what do y'all want to do, which is the second half of the...
Motion to approve?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, second?
Yeah, well, I think we got a motion and a second.
Not on the second one, did we?
I thought we already voted.
We did on the first one.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, I'll say it.
Okay, don't confuse me. There's already... Okay, so, the motion and a second, any discussion? No, all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, so that's part one and part two knocked out. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Kelly, have a good fore.
You're funny.
Okay, we're down to item eight. Hi, Wilkes Transportation Authority, we've got a board appointment, Robin Kipps with us. Robin?
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all, have a good Fourth of July. The, we got one board appointment?
Yes, sir.
Robin's the executive director. Good evening.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good, we got a board appointment to approve or not approve?
We do, it is to fill the vacant position at large of Brian Huffman, and the term will be from now until June the 30th, 2020.
How many, how many years?
It'll be in, it'll be to finish out the three-year term of Brian Huffman, so it will end on June 30th, 2020.
See that, and I probably just misplaced the...
Motion to approve, Mike.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, well, I know who it is, I just didn't see the actual application. I think it's in my box or something, yeah. Yeah, Mike, Mike called me this morning, and so, he's, he's ready to go to work, so. Y'all know, all know Mike?
We have a motion.
Not yet. Okay, a motion?
I'll say it. Was the minutes replaced?
So close, so close, I don't know. Motion and second, any...
I don't know anymore.
Any further discussion? Well, you're on that board, I think that's appropriate, you. All in favor? Thanks. Okay, good, have a good holiday.
Thank you, y'all too.
Okay, I'm Jay. Let's see, we've got, John Blevins is here, our DSS Director. John, welcome.
Thank you.
We've got a, actually got something we need to approve, don't we?
Yeah.
This is the first item?
Yes.
Energy Programs Outreach Plan Approval for Fiscal Year 2018, 2019, action. Let's go ahead and get that done, and then we'll get our update.
All righty. This is very standard, you all do it every year. Basically, what it's stating is what we do to outreach, to reach the populations they want us to target, which is the 60 and over and the disabled. And we have received about thirty-six thousand dollars already, and ready to open up and have opened up our crisis intervention program to help with cooling needs for the elderly, disabled, and stuff. It's up to six hundred dollars is how much we can help each time, that's very standard, that's the same as it has been, so there's really no changes in, it's just the state wants us to, you know, send them every year, who we reach out to, target with, and work with, so, pretty standard for them.
Let's get a motion to approve this. Motion. Second, Elmore, all in favor? Good, okay, John, our update now, please.
All right, thank you so much. All right, let's take a look at the numbers that we've got there. See here, as you can see on the Adult Medicaid, that's 6,844 cases in Adult Medicaid, that's up a little bit from last month, these were May numbers. Family Medicaid was up as well, with 8,365 cases. Medicaid Transportation, we had 1,912 cases with 6,600 expenditure in Medicaid Transportation. Food Nutrition has dropped again a little bit, as you can see, it was down to 5,594 cases with 1.2 million expenditures. The LEAP SIT Program, we didn't have any, obviously, just like I said, we'd run out of money, we're starting that up, so next month, you'll see some cases in there, where we've approved some. Daycare, we had 400 daycare cases, 144, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the funds expenditure when we get to the daycare report. Work first, we had 210 cases with forty-nine thousand dollars worth of expenditures. The Child Support, 3265, which was down a little bit from last month, but they collected three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars for our citizens. APS Services, we had 63 on APS Services, that's down a little from 68. As you can see, the APS Investigations are down a little bit as well, it's 23 compared to 27. Our CPS Case Management was up too, we had 40 CPS Case Management cases in May. Our CPS Investigations went up a little bit more, we had 107 compared to 98 last month. Our intake reports are almost identical, we had 115 intake reports. Our Foster Care went down from April to 230 in May, but as we discussed earlier today with Commissioner Blevins, they're up again to about 238, so they're gone up. CPS Adoptions, we had 297 adoption cases. So, obviously, you can tell, we're very busy, if you wanna look at the Foster Care Financial Report, we had $240,000 in expenditures in Foster Care for the month of May. As you can see, and as Chairman Blevins had mentioned last month, there is a good balance left in that, and we'll have one more draw out of that before the end of the year, but there'll still be quite a bit of money left there that will go back to the county, to the funds, so that's good, they turned, that turned out really well on that. The Adoption Services Financial Report, we had $50,000 worth of expenditures, which is very typical at the end of the year, because the vendor payments go up, people turn in a lot of vendor payments near the end of the year, well under budget, and there will be a balance there as well in the adoptions that will go back to the county, so, good news on that front. Subsized Child Care, as I'd said earlier, just wanted to mention that, it was down to 144 from 150, but some of that is due to the fact that we had a two-fold, one, our board meeting early in the month, and we were having trouble getting the numbers all in, and the other, imagine this, a glitch and then see fast, with the reporting that they had from the state that didn't give us all the numbers at the time. So, we feel like that number's a little bit higher than what it is, and so, therefore, we'll, next month, when you see it, that number will be corrected, and you'll have both of them on there. But that's very, as accurate as we can make it, but there's, I do feel it's a little higher than the 150,000 range, is what it was last month. If you wanna look at the CPS Foster Care Month Report, we had seven home studies and assists, we had one TPR completed, we had 12 voluntary placement agreements, there's 41 adoption cases, 14 children on our waiting list, and we completed five adoptions in the month of May. So, as we said earlier, 297 adoption assistance cases, one unlicensed adoptive home, 31 foster homes in our county, three applications received, and one completed licensure application, and one MAP family trained during the month of May. On the next page, total number of active foster care cases was 247, we have five monitoring cases, 12 VPA cases, and that gives you a total of 230 in our custody in the month of May. The funding breakdown, there's 132 were 4E funding, 90 were state funding, eight hadn't been determined as of this report yet, and 12 are VPAs, which is the older children, and five are monitoring. License placements, had 157 licensed placements, and breaking the trend we had for the last couple of months...
Yeah, we did have something going on there.
We had 76 placed in our county and 81 out. Some of that is due to some sibling groups that we've gotten, and when we get that many in at once, it sometimes overloads our system, we're unable to always find a relative placement or a placement in our county. But that is something that, you know, we know and you know, is something we're very attuned to and want. But 58 relative kinship placements, which is good, and we're glad to get as many of those as we can. We had eight trial placements.
John, are those both in, are those, is that reflected in the numbers 76 and 81, the 58?
Mm-hmm.
So, they could be, so that's...
That's a separate number.
Okay.
Yep, 58 were relative kinship placements, and then the others are 76 and 81. And then, there's some that he hasn't determined yet to get in there, so, some of those are licensed placements.
So, those kinship placements could be in Wilkes or out of Wilkes?
Could be.
But they wouldn't be reflected in the place in Wilkes or outside of Wilkes' numbers?
Probably not, no, I don't think he does, no, he does not, I know he doesn't put it in there. Those can be outside of Wilkes, because if we can find a family member or someone that can place a child with, we want to do that.
Most of them are, do you think?
Oh, I think the majority, vast majority are in our county.
So, if you counted those, all the kinship placements and all those placed in the other two, the majority would be in Wilkes.
Yes, that's true, very true.
Does that make sense?
It does, but in the 58, no, it would count.
And that's, and they're with family, and that's what you want.
Yeah, and they're in Wilkes.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, I would venture to guess, without looking at it, over 90% of that 58 is in our county. I mean, very, very few would be out. Eight trial placements, one runaway, six hospitalizations we had during that month, and 199 children on links. And the last thing I had for you there is, I told you last month, you saw where she's done such a good job, our fraud investigator, well, this month and the month of May, this is tops in the state in collection.
Wow.
So, she's done a really good job, real proud of her. Karen Ball is her name, she does good work, and you can't beat that, so that's, that's good. I always like to, I always like to be number one. Excepted some day.
Well, I'm sure there's fraud in every county and the state.
Do what now?
I'm sure there's fraud in every county and the state.
There is, she's just a good job.
So, what this says by being number one, that she's performing at a very high level at her job.
That's exactly the way I take it, yes, she's, she's working and finding...
Not that we have the most fraud in any county in the state.
No, no.
That we're finding a significant fraud.
That's an excellent point, and that's what she does, she does a good job.
Supposed cooler up your way. Any questions?
I'll just have a couple.
You got it.
Don't even go in tonight, I'll get him. On NC Fast, is there any way the Commissioners, they, I mean, can take it to the state and do anything if they fought that battle? Because it affects, it affects the Health Department, DSS.
WTA.
Trust me, every group that uses NC Fast is having problems.
Anytime they get involved in a software program, an application, it just seems to go wrong.
Well, the, like, for instance, the daycare numbers, right when we were getting ready to get them, it went away, there's nothing there.
It's been hard on the Health Department, it's been hard on the WTA.
They roll out this Medicaid transformation next year, it's gonna be, it's gonna be mind-boggling.
I told Mr. John there, if he wanted to make some forward, go back to a daytime meeting, I apologize back.
Well, and I apologize this morning too, and he said it's fine.
It's okay.
Yeah, he said it's fine.
I would like to, go ahead, pick your brain a little bit, the Medicaid changes that are coming. How is that, as far as transportation, which we just added WTA rep here, how is that going to impact the booking of transportation, the Medicaid transportation?
From what I've heard, it could, you know, can change, but from what I've heard, yeah, obviously, we'll determine the eligibility, we'll determine if they're eligible or not. But then, it's gonna go like to a broker or somebody, and they're gonna go...
And they'll determine if it's a trip.
Go down the list, who's cheapest means, who can, who can provide that transportation.
And they'll no longer, it could be outside the county, it could be YVETI, Aligane, motion...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be an open contract.
Yes, and it's, it could be, and if somebody come in and had on that list, and they said, I can do that trip, and my charge is X, and this other one is higher, they're gonna go with the cheaper one.
So, it would behoove us to have WTA competitive with all the surrounding transportation companies?
Yes, because it's not gonna be a, very, very possible, not anybody with any interest locally, it's gonna be somebody who's just black and white, looking at a list, picking something off.
A private, for profit company that'll be doing this, be booking.
But I'd assume they're gonna have to meet certain regulations for the vehicles, the drivers, the insurance, the...
Well, they'll, they'll make all that, keep everybody honest.
Yeah, when they do that, you know, that contract.
But that's gonna be tough, I'm sure it'll be tough to get...
So, there gonna be a list, yeah.
I'd say it'd be tough to get on the list.
Well, John, probably been keeping WTA, I mean, you've probably been scheduling it, or somebody in your department has, and probably keeping, I mean, I imagine y'all following the same kind of guidelines, keeping, keeping the rate down on your end for your budget too.
Yeah, and I mean, they've been really good, Robin's been really good to work with us and try to be competitive with it and things.
I know, we went, I know during the negotiations, they put outside of...
What is that rate now, Medicaid rate?
I'd say, I'd be afraid to say it off the top of my head, it's $2.90 maybe?
$2.90?
$2.90 a mile, maybe, something like it, but it changes, you know, there's some for the weekends, some for out of town, so, it varies, but I, I've got that at the office, and I can send it to you, no big problem, but it's somewhere in that vicinity.
All the transportation entities are paid the same rate?
No. You're talking about for Medicaid transportation, we have some variation in that as of the moment right now, but it's very slight, there's a very minimal difference between it. But then, you have to look at capacity, which, which systems have the capacity to do the job?
Right.
And some may be a little cheaper, but they might not have the capacity to do it.
Good work.
But you're gonna be out of that, are you gonna be out of that realm at some point by large?
It kinda sounds like, you know, at that point, you know, we'll say, this person meets qualifications, they have Medicaid, yes, they're eligible for Medicaid transportation, then at that point...
It's channeled off to whoever wins the contract.
Whoever wins the contract. And there, there'll be someone else making that, looking down that list, making that decision, can they take this person to this appointment, and how much is it gonna cost?
For you to be with a company, logisticare of it?
No, I'm not sure.
My understanding there, there are already bookings trips in some counties.
I've, I've heard that there has been some that are doing something like it, but I've not heard that particular name, but I have heard that. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's coming, it's coming.
It's basically privatizing it to some degree, isn't it?
But it will be...
Or moving in the direction of being privatized and being very competitive.
It'll be interesting too with the tracks, NC tracks, 'cause we'll be dealing with, on our end, possibly different providers than we've ever dealt with before, that we'll have to verify the trips for, to get in there, to get it in tracks that they can get paid.
Well, and then, what will that do as far as, is that gonna be a yearly bid, or are they gonna be, is it gonna be...
I would imagine yearly, 'cause that's the way it's set up now, each year, we go through contracts.
They were talking about it because it's gonna be such a headache yearly, at the minimum, to twice, or once every two years for a federal contract.
So, will they wait till next...
The last time out, it's gonna be federal.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Will they wait till next fiscal year to do it, or is it gonna be...
I think they're accelerated again, I don't know when, but...
Nineteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty-something.
I just, I've heard you're in a trouble, if somebody's come in with a low number and then can't fulfill their obligation.
And then, you've kinda reduced your workforce, and...
Yeah, so, I mean, it's just...
Speak the truth.
Well, see, I think some point, my calls are trouble. I, I, well, see, I think some point, my calls are trouble.
There's gonna be a lot of this happening over the next few years, too.
Yeah, a lot of changes.
The work for, the, the employment office, unemployment office, whatever you wanna call it now. It went privatized when the college gave it up, so...
NC works.
NC, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's happening all over the place, yeah. If y'all don't do your job now, they're gonna send the private company in here to do that, too, right?
You might like that if they take it off your budget.
We signed something to that effect. Keith and I were at the State Board of Directors meeting for the County Commissioner's Association. There were a lot of upset commissioners there over that MOU.
Oh, yeah.
Let me tell ya.
I'm sure.
They were hot under the collar.
Yep.
That old boy from up in Cherokee.
I am sure.
He was on the warpath. Yeah, they were, they were bent out of shape, man. I'm telling you, they were upset about that thing. So, okay, any other questions about the DSS updates? Always something exciting going on over there, John, I tell ya.
Never a dull, that's for sure.
Well, have a good holiday.
Y'all, too. Enjoy your forest.
Yeah.
See ya.
Sorry about keeping you so late.
Yeah.
All right, guys, we're getting down to the nitty-gritty now. Okay, this voting delegate thing that we do every year for NCACCD, y'all? That was the Naco, which, which he's gonna do that now. We got somebody from North Carolina, North Carolina, running for Naco president. Nice, isn't it? Okay, I guess I, I'll be there, so...
I make a motion, we...
There's only one person to vote for, so...
Boy, Gary Blevins, Commissioner, Chairman Gary Blevins, the voting delegate.
I'm touched.
Second.
Second, any...
Third.
Any other volunteers? Third, all in favor? Oh, you guys are a real hoot. Yeah.
And the bus driver's a focus.
Yeah, I can see the tire marks across the, then this purchasing agreement, L, or purchasing department, sale of surplus inventory, I'm sure you've got some wonderful items on there, John. John Yates, our county manager.
Yes, Wilkes County Purchasing Department is requesting approval from the Wilkes County Board of Commissioners to sell a fallen surplus vehicle using electronic oxygen method. We have two-oh-sevens, one-oh-eights, and one-oh-nine-four Crown V from the Sheriff's Department.
Keith's, Keith's gonna buy one and drive it to Yellowstone Park or wherever.
They have a Crown V.
They're telling you, they, they don't make them anymore.
No, no.
Trust me, I'm excited to see them.
I bet you've spent, okay, so you got four real parts only. Motion by...
I'll make a motion.
Motion, second by Commissioner Mountain. Any discussion on this, Keith?
I doubt it.
All in favor, raise your hands.
I tell you...
Five-oh, it was, it was a five-oh vote on that one.
Commissioner Yates, Newton, and myself can vote.
You guys probably sat in some of those guys, didn't you? Let's see, NC Department of Transportation roadway maintenance approval, John?
Yes, this office has received a petition for MSR-1 requesting consideration on addition of the first point-three-six mile length section of Sidney Lane, the state maintenance system. Is required the county commissioners demonstrate approval of this process after approval is sent back to our district office for property information research along with road investigation to follow. Sincerely, David Poindexter, district engineer. And this is often one fifteen minutes.
Yeah. Well, we sure don't want it.
All these, all these folks, front and back, on the back of these signs, or on that...
Thirteen, sixteen, sixteen occupied homes have a street front.
Keith? It must be paved on down or something, it must be just a little gap there. You can't have that many homes on them.
What on...
Point-three... That's a lot of homes. That's pretty tight.
Well, they all got, they're not, a lot of them aren't on Sidney Lane.
Well, you can throw out an address every time, too fast.
Well, now, a lot of them aren't on PO boxes, fire department road. They're not all on that.
Interesting.
A lot of PO boxes. Sidney Lane, Sidney Lane, Sidney Lane.
The only thing, only way we get hurt is if the state turns the rug down.
Yeah, yeah.
I would approve, I would, I would actually approve.
Surely that, I hope that don't happen. Can't be. Yeah, motion second, discussion all in favor, please, Ray Jam. That carries as well unanimously. Item in, Wilkes County Board of Commissioners scheduled meeting. We need to take action on this to cancel our second meeting in July, which we've never had a second meeting in July since I've been here, probably since you've been here, Keith? Have you ever had a second meeting in that period of time?
I thought Eddie wanted to have them.
Eddie wants to have them, Eddie wants to have that second meeting. Get him on the phone. All I can tell ya. Motion.
Is there any special word to cancel?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to cancel the July seventeen, twenty-eighteen meeting.
I'll take that motion. Second, any discussion, all in favor of, can't say, hey, in honor of Gary, why don't we sit up? Okay. And the whole, the whole business, I wanted to recognize my old nemesis, Gary L. Blevins, heavy on the L, who's here visiting with us tonight. Gary, it's, it's good to see you out and about, friend.
Thanks.
Always nice, nice to see you. Appreciate your service to the county and, and in the military as well. You don't know how much that means. And Arnold Lake, he's here making his annual visit, and we appreciate Arnold, too, and all he's done for our community. He's a top-flight citizen all the way around. We appreciate, appreciate all that, so. You guys got any business?
No, no.
Any new business? Gentlemen, I think we have a couple items for closed session tonight, and we'll need an appropriate motion by the attorney, by our county attorney, Mr. Tony Trivlett, to...
Chairman, we need a motion to go into closed session to consult with the board's attorney considering given instructions concerning one more potential judicial or administrative actions, and to consult with the board's attorney to protect the attorney from that request.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor? That motion carries, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everyone. At six forty-five, we got public concerns. Carol Bracewell, who's joined us before to speak on subjects of concern, is here to speak, and Carol, come on up, please.
Where do you want me?
Either seat's fine, make yourself at home. You've got, we've got a, we do have to get a pub, have to get a public hearing as well.
Right, but that's fine, I know I've got five minutes.
Well, you know, give or take, yeah, we're not, I'm not, I'm not timing it, so...
My, my concern at this point is that I think we have kind of a perfect storm brewing in that I'm kind of a conservation water person. And we know, what was this Wednesday, that we closed down the North, the North Wilkesboro because of a well and some water concerns? I'm not gonna reinvent wheels simply because we have many people in place. And BJ Cook has done this amazing, I think is probably one of the most interesting reads with Nathan Gatlin and everybody from the Forest Service on good forestry practices, management, and what we should be doing in the watersheds to make them viable, clean and safe. Because what is in the top of the watershed ends up going down to the water table. And I go around and I ask people, okay, what happens when the power grid goes down? How are you gonna get your water? And they said, oh, we've got a well. I said, yeah, I'm gonna repeat that question. And that is, if our grid goes down tomorrow, how are you gonna get your water? Does your well require water? Well, yeah. So, say, say seventy percent of our waters in Wilkes County are groundwater, and they are stormwater runoff. And so we would get into issues, and this is a fascinating report, it's the fact that a lot of these washer, waters are washing down from cattle farms, they're coming down from poultry operations. We're supposed to have buffers on the stream at a certain distance, and different types of buffers. You're in landscaping, you know this.
Well, fifty feet is the riparian buffer.
Well, that's true, but, but our loggers don't necessarily respect that all the time, as in my case, when one logger was on the, on Little Warrior Creek, and two-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty feet from my trout stream. So this is very, very interesting, if y'all haven't read it, I, I highly recommend it. It cost me forty-five dollars, but I ended up in the hospital Saturday night, and I had been doing nothing but doing what I call core sampling, my own independent water study analysis, which is taking water out of Little Warrior Creek, getting a soil sample, going up and getting my water before it goes into my well, and then getting water after it goes into my well. Now, if you go to, up here, they want, they want seventy-five dollars to send somebody out to test your water. If I take it up to North Wilkesboro, it's only twenty-five dollars. However, I think there's valid public concern here, because the other thing that is happening is that there are some farmers who are not respecting those buffers, and they're spraying roundup in the creeks, because it's convenient for them. Now, there's many ways to clean out creeks. There's fire, there's natural ways to clean out creek without putting neurotoxins in the water stream. And I mean, honest to gosh, I've talked to many of the veterinarians that I have on my, on my list of endurance riders, but we have horses that drop dead from drinking out of streams anywhere from Virginia, and up there, all the horses have EPM from drinking out of the watershed. That's as possible in season. We've had a case of it up here in Palier, and that dumps into the Reddies River. So then we've got Leatherwood and some of these other places where they're coming down through here. And I think Leatherwood's at no risk, simply because they're higher and there's not any operations up there I know that would affect their water table. But I just know that I became deathly ill, is unexplained. I've been getting progressively sicker since I've come in here in two thousand and one, and, you know, we want our farmers to be productive, we want food, we want, like, cattle business, poultry business to thrive, but these buffers are in there for a reason. And BJ and Nathan Gatlin and I are gonna get together, because this is the most fascinating read for water eek ever, and I think right now you're in the middle of referendums, am I correct, for water intake and wastewater management. I'm not exactly sure where y'all are at this point on this, but I've had through wastewater four level training, and this is many years ago with Sierra Environmental, but, you know, we want the, we want the hillbenders in our, you know, this is Ash County, I do believe. We want everything viable, because if you don't have aquatic life, that is, that is, you don't have human life. And, you know, when, when the waters thrive, the forests thrive, and we just got such a lovely county, we're, what, the largest county in North Carolina? We are, we are, the largest, as, as far as I understand it, our logging industry is very important to us. And, you know, I think, I think everybody tries very hard to stay compliant, but at this point, proper composting, according to this book, if you're gonna compost, you're gonna go down with concrete to properly compost, so it doesn't leach down into the water. But we've got an awful large, four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-three Mexicans, and there's specifically Mexicans in here as of two thousand and fifteen, we've got two-hundred-and-eighty-two Cubans. As of Saturday night, I met an Ethiopian in Walmart, but we, we have to cross many, many bridges here. We have to, there are many, many Hispanic families that don't speak a word of English. So that's why we have some of these signs on the trailheads, you know, the birds and bees, and I'm chasing bees and honey and clean water up the stream. So I'm doing core samplings, and I don't necessarily want my name to get out there, simply because if I do, if it gets out there in the newspaper, then I'm not an effective independent person going into the stream. So I called in several, several forces, 'cause there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. We all want the same things. And so Nathan and I are gonna meet with BJ Cook, who authored this report, probably next week, and we just want what's good for this county, because right now, look at the lake, it's filled, the reservoir's filled with recreational boaters, and the water smells good, and the quality's good, but that's not so on up on the, on the headwaters, so to speak, the five springs, up above many, what I call LA Lenore area. We're technically part of the High Country there, but, you know, we're not important to the High Country because we're not a tourist spot, we're an agricultural spot. So, you know, it's, it's gonna take time to implement some of these changes, and we have farmers that are excellent stewards, and doing, trying to do the right thing, but then we have a few rogues that say, oh, well, it's okay to spray roundup in the creek. No, it's not, it's a neurotoxin. And then it works down to the aquifer, where you're drilling down two-hundred, two-hundred-twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty feet to get your well watered. So, you know, I'm not drinking the water right now, because I ended up in the hospital on Saturday night, and I have the bill to prove it. You know, it's just, I, and all I did any different from anybody else was I was digging in streams, and I was taking water samples, and I was taking core samples. And I'm just, being my father's daughter, who was, was a warrior for the environment, one of the greatest environmental conservationists in North Carolina, I'm just doing what my father did. You know, Trout Unlimited, seventy percent of our funds stay in state of North Carolina. And we have both warm water fisheries in this county, and we have the trout streams. And so we know that everybody's taking care of the trout streams, but when we get on down to the runoff water in the ponds and say, you know, the YMCA campus across from me, as, if I could throw a fly line, or, I'm a little warrior where Baker Engineering did not do the impact studies, and by the time I have a link to Baker Engineering in two thousand and six, it was only live for fifteen minutes, and it took me five hours to load my, my photographs, so we basically have bleeding banks, and it, it affects the river, and it affects everything, because you notice sometimes of the year that it's this red mud, and it took the Corps of Engineers a long time to open the, the beaches this year. And we know that we had epic rainfalls as of two thousand and thirteen, and we also know that we've had some freaky rainstorms here, like just last week alone, when this was going on, we had three major rainfalls over in the Boomer Township. So, you know, if we've got water coming down, I think it's probably not necessarily the farmer, but the cattle farm above me. It may be that we've got a lot of landfill area pushed in and made into ponds and different things. I'm not talking over the last hundred years. I thought I was leaching metal because my water drip blew. It's actually the blue, the copper is from fecal coliform, and we have trace amounts of that and, and some other things, and just, just a tiny bit of arsenic in our water. But I invite you guys to, to, you know, to connect with these guys. I don't know how tuned you are into the, the soiling hot water conservation over your , beside Sheriff's Department, but this is a profound piece of work that BJ Cook did. And so I see no reason to invent, reinvent the wheel. I just wanna tie into the existing forces and become part of my county. I've been here for twenty years, and I don't particularly like it. It's just because of me, because I've always lived and worked somewhere else, and now I've discovered the YMCA, which is wonderful. So, you know, I'm not whining that there's nothing to do here anymore, like, you know, I, it's thirty miles to the senior center, because I can very easily go to YMCA, Family, Wilkes Family YMCA, and have some wonderful friends, and I'm so thankful to live in this county. I feel safe. I don't have to worry about people shooting me unless I'm sneaking up, chasing the honeybees in the water, and I've basically told people what I'm doing. But we have such a delicate ecosystem, and, you know, we want our bees to flourish. Well, this is some of the finest honey I have ever tasted. It is testing out at Texas A&amp;M at ninety-nine percent pure. And a lot of this is not supplemented with sugar water, it is wildflower honey. So I'm just here for the environment, I'm trying to be a good steward, I want to work with everybody, whether it be farmer, recreational fishing person, or just people in our county to make sure that twenty years down the road, or even a week down the road, we don't have the perfect storm. You know, because we have a lot of factors coming together that put me in the hospital on Saturday night, so. I don't honestly feel that it's my due diligence to have to pay to have my water tested. I think that the county should actually be taking some of that initiative, simply because we're taxpayers. And I've been trying to get ahold of the tax database, not to be a bad person or not to know what anybody, and it's just to say, what percentage of our people live in what population? Because I've got other concerns affecting Raven Falls West to Caldwell and Alexander and everything. But we'll take those up on another night, and I so appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your concerns, and thank you for coming and speaking. We've got a hearing, and we'll just go into the regular agenda right after we finish. Okay, so we've got a public hearing on a CDBG grant, Neighborhood Revitalization. We'll open the floor if anyone has any comments. I know Michelle Ball is here from high country. She's a regional planner. Would you like to come up and give us a little information about what you're doing?
Sure.
Welcome, Michelle. It's good to see you. Welcome down here off the mountain.
Kind of hoping Eddie would be here tonight, because Eddie Barnes.
Sure, we know Eddie.
We're working with him.
He might be on vacation or something this week.
Yeah, he told me so.
Tomorrow being the fourth and everything is.
Yeah, I don't blame him a bit. But the purpose of the public hearing is to give opportunity for citizen input concerning the upcoming application submission for a CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant, Neighborhood Revitalization Funds. The county is looking at applying to the Department of Commerce for CDBG funds. There's ten million dollars budgeted right now. Maximum award, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Funds would be used to assist low-income residents with home rehabilitation and possible home replacement. Now, 2012 was the last year that the Chamber, or that the Department of Commerce had the scattered site housing program. I don't know how many of you all are familiar with that.
You remember it well.
I've done it for many years in several of our counties. Helped Wilkes with a couple of theirs after Paul Robinson left. And this is basically the same grant. Two main differences is unlike the scattered site, which was non-competitive, the county, as long as they asked for it, they got the money every three years, four hundred thousand dollars. This is very competitive, because we're looking at, if everybody asks for the max, thirteen grants maybe statewide. And the other thing is, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's almost double what the maximum was with the scattered site grant. I work with a couple other counties. I don't know if they're, you've got to look at, it's a two-and-a-half-year project. You've got to look at how long it'll take you to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand. So my guess is there'll probably be only, maybe five hundred thousand dollars might be the max, unless you were to find a lot of really, really bad houses out there. But as of right now, we're looking at six to seven homeowners to be assisted, and this is major repairs, forty, forty-five thousand dollar repairs. Or if the home is bad enough, maybe a replacement with a double wide. And we've done that several times. Eligible applicants must own and occupy the home full-time, no second homes, and have a household income less than eighty percent of the county median, which for Wilkes, this is set by HUD, they have a chart. So for example, a two-person household, the household income must be under thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Eligible properties must be located in Wilkes County. However, homes cannot be, we cannot do properties in the floodplain. So if any part of the whole property is in the floodplain, it's ineligible. There's been a committee assembled to help, Eddie's working on that, to help plan with the planning process and the selection of the recipients. And homeowner applications for the program will be accepted until the thirty-first, or to the end of the month, until the thirty-first of July. The application, the county's application to the state is due September twenty-eighth.
I saw that. And we have to have another hearing.
Yes.
As well in August, is this federal money?
This is federal money that is filtered down through the state, through the Department of Commerce, but yes, it is federal. So there's all those federal, all those federal things that are attached to it.
Is Eddie's department actively going out and looking for or seeking potential grant?
I know there are some referrals that were left over from the old programs. And I know he's contacted those people, sent them applications. I really, I kind of wish he was here, because I'm not sure how he set up to take the applications. I want to say it might be on the website. I didn't think to check this morning, but.
Excuse me. Jewel, could you maybe touch base with Eddie and ask him if there's some way, how this program works with the citizens? And if there's some way they can reach out to him and get considered to be a recipient? I think that would help a lot. But you're talking about a program for low-income elderly and disabled homeowners. So you can just imagine the impact it has on them to have their house refurbished.
It, I mean, it is. It's a great program, and I hate that, really hated to see it go away a few years ago. So I'm glad they're looking at it. I'm hoping this is just not a one-off, that maybe they'll keep this going each year.
Who administers the program?
We, in the past, when we have scattered site going, I basically did it from beginning to end. I did the rehab, all of the administrative work, you know, working with the state and the county. We're not able to handle that at the COG right now. I am able to help with the application process, the county's application process, selection process, and the federal requirements that are attached, fair housing, citizen participation, that type of thing. But you'll probably, if you get funded, if the county gets funded, you'll probably have to go out for proposals to get somebody to come in to do the rehab part of it, which is meeting with the homeowners and the contractors and setting all that up.
How do you, I mean, I know at Brock, they have the, they do that, Weather, call it Weather Sation. Would that not fit, would that not be the same thing that they do?
Theirs is kind of a small portion of what this can do. I mean, with what this program does, we have to go through certain procurement processes to obtain contractors for each house. So each house has to be bid out on its own merits.
So this, part of this money will be used to hire somebody to administer.
Yeah, there's ten percent, ten percent of the award can be used for admin.
Yeah. So will you hire, will Wilkes County hire someone?
More than likely, yeah. I know that's what was done in the past when Paul was here, because that's how I was hired. He did the compliance part, and I came in and did the rehab section of it. Then when he retired, I took over the whole thing for one year.
It's kind of a difficult program to administer. I know we had some issues in the past with people backing out and not having a commitment to it. So I know it's a little bit tough. Of course, contractors now are so busy. It's going to be a challenge the next couple, you know, next year or two to find the people. Now, and I know this is somewhat a COG function, and I know I had some conversations with Piedmont Triad. I think they kind of specialize in doing this work. I don't know if they might be able to help with it or not.
And it's very well possible.
And I think they've talked with Eddie about it, but you'll be doing the application for the grant. We'll just cross that bridge. There's no grant, there's no matching funds.
No matching funds, yeah.
So it's just, this money, if we don't get it, it's going to go to the elderly and disabled in some other county, basically.
So when might we expect approval or disapproval? When will we find out?
Like I said, the county's application is due September twenty-eighth. Hopefully after the first of the year. I really don't know how long it's going to take them. I don't know how long it's going to take them to turn around. Yeah, I really don't.
Longer than we.
Longer than we really want, but I'm hoping by the spring, early spring, late winter.
Is there a timeframe on how you have to spend the money? I know one year, back years ago, we was losing some of it, and it was going back.
And there is, and it's based on when it's, the dates, the countdown starts when it's awarded. And usually when the county, I can't remember who signs first, either the county or whoever signs last, that's when the deadline, that's when the time starts. And it's usually thirty-six months, so two and a half years.
No, that's reasonable.
That's reasonable.
And that's why I'm saying, seven hundred and fifty's a little, a lot to spend in that amount of time, unless you were to find some really bad homes you just wanted to replace them all.
I don't think that'd be too difficult.
Probably not.
No, there's a lot of.
So it'll be based on, it'll be based on the applications that are received.
Okay, well, look, we'll have another hearing in August, and we can, maybe if there's any public comment or any input from the public, we'll take that then. But we appreciate it. This meets the requirement for our first hearing, and we'll leave it at that for now. Any other questions, gentlemen, commissioners? Okay.
Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. Next time, we'll make Eddie come out.
Yes.
We'll ask him, though, we won't make him. All right, okay, we'll just go ahead then and go out of that public hearing, and we'll get the regular board meeting for the county commissioners. This is our July three, 2018, meeting of the Wilkes County Commissioners. Everybody, welcome. Glad to have you here. It's sheer cooler in here than it is outside this evening, so the fireworks probably go off by themselves tomorrow night, as hot as it is. We usually start the meeting with a call to order, and then an invocation and a pledge. Commissioner Gamble always leads us in the invocation. If you will, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance following the invocation. Thank you.
I just pray in their hand, Father, just thank you for another day, beautiful day you gave to us. Just thank you for everything we take for granted. Thank you for your guidance, and just ask you to lead us in a direction of being pleasing. And I will do, get to the Lord from His name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat. Cranked up here. First thing, item D is approval of the minutes of the board meeting that was held here on June nineteenth. I need a motion for approval, please.
Motion is a second.
We're one short, so you guys all gonna have to step up. I'll go ahead and mention, I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Commissioner Settle is out of town. He is not here tonight. I don't think he's missed more than one meeting, zero meetings in his, what, six years on the board? Going, getting into his sixth year on the board. So we're going to give him a excused absence tonight, and the four of us will try to do the best we can. Now, you don't think so? Okay. Yeah, unexcused. We miss him anyway. He's a valuable part of the board. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get these, we'll start with, let's see, hold on, we got. Also, before we go on, let's get item F on the agenda. This is going to be postponed, is that correct, Sarah?
Yes, sir.
Item F on the agenda. These approvals of the Six Mile Fire District. We're doing them as we can get the fire departments in here, and as they remember that they're supposed to be here, all that stuff, so. But we'll go ahead and do E, that's State Road. Kevin, Kevin, if you want to come on up, you can introduce the fire departments and help us get through this, and then Tony will come in at the appropriate time and make the motion.
I would like to introduce Sandy Spicer tonight. He was the board president down there, and Brad Spicer's the fire chief. And the unique thing about State Road is they not only serve Wilkes, but they serve Surrey County, too. And State Road is one of our more progressive fire departments. We ended up with some no man's land going up towards Allegheny County, and they're in the preliminary process right now of doing a substation to help us take back no man's land then. So I want that to be said.
Kevin, I know the homeowners really, really appreciate what you're doing. They do. If we can do something to help, within our power, we will.
State Road really does a good job for Wilkes County. But we're here tonight going along with this GIS project that we've been working on for the last several years. Still on the line to get them all approved this year. But we're here tonight, State Road first, for the designation of their Six Mile Fire Insurance District and the designation of their tax district also. And so I'm here to look for their approval. I noted Tony's got special wording that he wants, so I'm going to defer to him on that one.
Special wording. Any comments, any input before we tee up that motion?
Ready to go.
Okay, hang on.
Sandy, if both sides of the document will be approved, we're ready to go. If the board wishes to proceed, we'll move to the motion to approve the designation of Fire Insurance and Fire Tax District for State Road Fire Department as presented at the time.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Five-oh. Gentlemen, appreciate it. We're going to do the other one for Wilkes-Ardell, and then we'll take a quick break. I'll sign the papers, and we'll be done with that. So appreciate everything very much. Okay, again, item F, we'll put on the agenda at a later time, I think August?
August seventh.
Okay, good. And we'll go on to Wilkes-Ardell Volunteer Fire Department. Kevin?
And I would like to introduce David Redman, who's their board president, I think they call him chairman down there. And the fire chief, I do want to make a correction that I gave to the administrative assistant. It's Carl Junior Lewis. For my twenty-three years, I've known him just as Junior Lewis, but for this official name, it's Carl Junior Lewis. And so you'd make that designated change. Unique about Wilkes-Ardell is they serve part of Ardel County, too. They have as large a district or larger district in Ardel County than they do in Wilkes. And they do a fine job for us also on the eastern end of the county down there. So we're here tonight as part of that GIS project again to get the designation of their GIS maps, their Fire Insurance District, and their Fire Tax District. And so I'll defer.
There's not much no man's land on that end of the county, is there? Carl?
Not a whole lot.
Okay, Tony, thank you.
David and Junior have both signed, so we're ready for the orders. We need a motion to approve the designation, Fire Insurance and Fire Tax District for Wilkes-Ardell Fire Department.
Tom, are you? Good. Second, is there a second? Second. Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. That's unanimous as well. Gentlemen, we appreciate everything you do for the county. It's a huge service you provide, and it does not go unnoticed or unappreciated by the board and by the taxpayers. Thank you, thank you again. All right, I'm going to just give a quick recess. We'll get this paperwork signed, and be back in about five minutes and get this thing done.